Any votes on this, given that we're doing it remotely, any votes that are not unanimous have to be roll call votes. So probably what we'll do is ask you not only to say aye or nay, but to raise your hand just so you can see it in the camera. And that way, if we have to do a roll call vote, we can. So the first order of business is to review and make any changes to the agenda. The only change that I've got is Roger Landjament isn't going to be joining us this evening. He is occupied elsewhere. Last I heard about Tim Smith is planning on joining us and should be hopping on at about seven o'clock. So at seven o'clock, we'll pivot to Tim.
Okay.
I did notice there seemed to, there seemed to be an error in the, oh, sorry, you haven't got to the minutes yet, have you?
Uh, no, that was the next thing with the next. So yeah, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 16?
I'll make that motion this morning.
Okay. So I think Mark made the motion to approve and then Suzanne seconded it.
Sure.
Great.
All right. I noticed an error about having accidentally assigned me to the position of vice chair. I just wanted to.
Oh, no, that was intentional. Yeah.
It was an error. That's, that's what you get for missing the meeting.
I knew it. I knew it. That's, yeah, just figured I'd check, see if there was an accident on that one.
Uh, any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll vote.
On this, sorry, no, we can do the vote first, then I have a procedural question.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
I'll take Jacob's drinking as an aye. Yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't there.
Oh, it's an abstention. Okay. Okay. So then we do have to do a roll call vote on this one. So, Mark?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Charlie, aye, and then one abstention from Jacob. Great. So the motion, motion carries.
Um.
Question?
Yeah, actually, oh, of course, now I caught, I knew I saw something else that I forgot to mention. Just under, well, two things. So under five C, um, we might need to just correct the spelling for DuBois King. It's super minor, but uh, DuBois is misspelled. And then procedurally, just to avoid any risk of Zoom bombing, uh, Charlie, when you set this up, do you have it set up? So that no one else can share their screen?
Uh, I don't have it set up that way. Ken though.
Cool. Yeah. Y'all hear about what happened to the Vermont Senate and has been happening to like kindergarten classes and public meetings across North America.
Wish I could have Bobby Starr's face when that happened.
So Suzanne, for your, for your benefit, so anytime there's like a publicly released Zoom like, um, meeting that anyone can get the access to hackers are sort of jumping onto meetings anonymously and like broadcasting like pornography and racial epithets and whatnot. So is there anyone that's administering a public meeting using Zoom has to take like an extra step and go into the security settings and make sure that no one else can share their screens? So just figured I'd call that out before we get Zoom bombed by the elderly masses.
So what, uh, not to have you walk me through it, but like, how do you do that?
Um, there's a function at the bottom of the screen that you can hit to share your screen. So if we get into stuff that we want to share and show, show documents or stuff like that, we can certainly do that.
Okay. I share.
Charlie, what's the button?
Uh, it's right down in the middle of the screen. It's a green button with an arrow, but will.
Oh, right.
So, um, one thing we do need to do, just to keep a record of everybody who's in attendance or remote in attendance, is anybody that joins, if they could just take a second to, um, just hop on and say who they are. I think we saw one other, uh, square. And as far as muting goes, given that there's just like seven of us on right now, let's not worry about it. If we do get more participants on, then probably we'll want to mute, mute everybody just so that we're not getting background noise. So with that, we'll move on to the conflict of interest policy. So we discussed this briefly at the last meeting, but we wanted to give Suzanne a copy since she hadn't had a chance to review it yet. So that she had a chance to look at it before actually voting to adopt it or not. Have you had a chance to read through it, Suzanne?
Yeah, I went through it.
Great. Any questions or anything? Jump out?
Not particularly. Seems pretty standard.
Great. Then if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the conflict of interest policy.
I'll make that motion this morning.
We have a motion from Mark to adopt the conflict of interest policy. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Jacob. Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Suzanne?
Aye. Yeah, aye.
Great. Awesome. So motion carries. Again, unanimous votes don't need roll call votes. So motion carries. Great. So now we're going to jump to appointments. Um, these are listed on the agenda. They're also on the, uh, spreadsheet from the town report, if you've got that. So the first appointment, or just also just to review, so appointments don't need a motion or a second. They just require a nomination. Um, once all the nominations are in, we'll close nominations and then we'll vote. So, um, first up is the water commission, Darren, Darren Drevic's term expired. So we need a nominee for a term of three years. Typically, this is the select board.
I'll nominate Suzanne.
Great. Well, we have a nomination for Suzanne. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Suzanne serving on the water commission for a term of three years, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Suzanne.
Wait, did I abstain from a vote for myself?
I never knew if you had to or not, but either way, a majority of the quorum present elected you. So congratulations. Second up is a water commissioner for a term of two years.
I nominate Leanne.
We have a nomination for Leanne. Is there a sec, uh, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Leanne serving, um, a two-year term on the water commission, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Motion carries. Development review board, um, term of four years, Sue Wilson, term expiring. Are there any nominations for the development review board, term of four years?
I nominate Sue Wilson.
You have a nomination for Sue Wilson. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Sue serving a term of four years on the development review board, signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Congratulations, Sue. Second up is an alternate for a term of four years on the development review board, Wendy Howard, term expires. Is there a nomination for an alternate to the development review board?
I nominate Wendy Howard.
We have a nomination for Wendy Howard. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Wendy serving as an alternate on the development review board, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Next up, oh, I had a question. Mark, you had said at the last meeting that Merle had made a point of telling you that he wanted to get reelected to the DRB, but.
Well, that's, his term wasn't up, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had that right. Yeah, he's, he's up next year, so.
Said if his term was up, he wanted me to nominate.
Great. Uh, next up, agent to convey real estate, term of one year, Barry Cade, term expiring. There are nomination?
I nominate Barry Cade.
We have a nomination from Barry. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Barry, serving a term of one year, agent to convey real estate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Motion carries. Next up is the budget committee, all for a term of one year. There's five appointments to be made here. The terms expiring were Scott Perry, Mark Blatt, Sue Wilson, Aaron Copaz, and Charlie Hancock. We could take these individually, or if someone wanted to nominate a slate, we could do that too.
I'll nominate the whole slate. All five.
Okay. So just to clarify, Mark's renominating the entire slate for the budget committee? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of, uh, reelecting the budget committee, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. And just a reminder too, that just because the budget committee is listed as five people, anybody is always welcome to attend and encouraged to. Next up, director of disaster and emergency management, uh, term of one year, Greg Lucas, term expiring. No, nominations?
I nominate Doug Copaz.
Okay, we have a nomination for Doug Copaz. No nominations? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of Doug Copaz, serving as director of disaster and emergency management, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next up is the deputy, uh, deputy disaster, or I'm sorry, the deputy director of disaster and emergency management, uh, term of one year, Brent Godden, term expiring.
I'll nominate Godden.
You want to nominate Brett?
Yep.
Okay. We have a nomination for Brent. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will, um, vote. All those in favor of Brent, serving as deputy disaster director, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Great. Carries, Brent's been elected. Next up is fence viewers. This is, um, three appointments, each for a term of one year. Uh, this was the listers traditionally, term expires. Is there a nomination for a slate of fence viewers?
I nominate the listers.
We have a nomination for the listers to serve as fence viewers for a term of one year. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of listers serving as fence viewers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Motion carries. Uh, next up, um, northwest regional planning representative. This is a representative to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Two appointments, each for a term of three years. Uh, Mark's and Darren's terms expiring. We have a nomination for Northwest Regional Planning Rep. Two seats.
I nominate Mark and Jacob.
We have a nomination for Mark and Jacob. Any other nominations?
I'm going to decline.
We have a declining of a nomination. Any other?
I will not be.
It's worth a shot.
Sorry, Jacob, did you nominate Suzanne?
I was going to nominate Leanne, although Suzanne, if you're willing, I'll nominate you.
Now Leanne's not here, we can nominate her.
All right. We have a nomination of Leanne as the other rep to regional planning. Hearing no other nominations, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of, of Mark and Leanne serving as reps to Northwest Regional Planning Commission for a term of three years. Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Next up, animal control officer, term of one year, Keith San Pietro, term expiring. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Keith.
We have a nomination of Keith. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Keith San Pietro, serving as animal control officer for a term of one year, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Carries. Um, next up is road commissioner, term of two years. Mark's terms expiring. Do we have a nomination for road commissioner?
I nominate Mark.
We have a nomination for Mark for reelected as road commissioner. Are there any other nominations?
It's such a great job.
Okay, hearing other nominations, nominations, uh, all those in favor of Mark Blatt, serving two-year terms, road commissioner, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Carries. Uh, next up is rep to Northwest Solid Waste District, uh, term of three years, Barry Cade, term expiring. Are there nominations?
Barry Cade.
I have a nomination of Barry Cade. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Barry Cade, serving as rep to Northwest Solid Waste District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions. Great. Barry's been reelected. Next up, we've got transportation advisory committee, representative and alternate, um, term of one year. Mark and Michael's term is expiring. Um, do we have nominations for the transportation advisory rep and the alternate?
I nominate Mark and Michael.
Okay, we have nomination for Mark and for Michael to be reelected as representatives and alternate. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of Mark Blatt, serving as transportation advisory rep, and Michael Snyder, serving as transportation advisory alternate, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Great. They've been reelected. Next up is recreation board, Marcia Phillips, uh, term of three years expiring. Is there a nomination for the rec board for a term of three years?
I'll nominate Marcia Phillips.
We have a nomination for Marcia. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Marcia Phillips, serving a term of three years on the rec committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Extensions. Great. Reelected Marcia. Reps to the Wild and Scenic, um, study committee, term of one year. Misty McCartney and Darren Drevic, terms expiring. Do we have, um, nominations for the Wild and Scenic, uh, representative?
Charlie, can a visitor nominate?
I believe nominations can only come from the board, but if you have an idea, by all means, throw it out there.
Carissa Stein.
Okay.
Okay. I'll nominate Misty and Carissa.
Okay. So we have a nomination for Misty McCartney and Carissa Stein to serve as MRVA Wild and Scenic reps for a term of one year. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions. Great. Reelected Misty and elected Carissa. Next up is the community garden board. This is seven seats, all expiring this year, term of one year. The board was Parmeguit, Melissa Haberman, Remy Gretton, Wendy Howard, Mary Temple, Leanne Barnard, and George Hamilton. I'm open to taking these all as one slate if someone wants to make that nomination.
I'll nominate.
Existing slate. Okay. So we have, I think Mark nominated the existing board.
Jacob did.
Or Jacob did. Any other nominations?
Remy will appreciate the French pronunciation of his name, I'm sure.
You're welcome.
Remy Gretton. Yeah, that was good.
All right. Uh, hearing none, we'll close nominations. All in favor of reelecting the community garden board for a term of one year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Reappointed the board. Conservation commission, first up is a term of four years. Joan Hildreth, term expiring. Are there any nominations?
I can't see them. I can't see them.
If anyone would like to serve.
I nominate Joan Hildreth.
Okay, we've got a nomination for Joan Hildreth. Are there any other nominations?
I can't touch it. It's fine.
Hearing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Joan Hildreth, serving a four-year term on the conservation commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Aye.
Yours, okay, Mark?
Yeah, aye.
That's good. All right. So you've reappointed Joan Hildreth. Um, next up is, uh, an appointment to finish out the remainder of a four-year term. Monica Hill had a term expiring 2022. Monica has stepped back from the board, so we have an open seat. So this would be appointing an individual to serve out the remainder of a four-year term expiring 2022. I have been informed that Lynn Locker is interested in doing this. Um, I'll put that out there. So are there any nominations for conservation commission? Term of four years, uh, ending 2022 to fill that seat.
I'll nominate Lynn Locker.
We have a nomination for Lynn Locker. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, Lynn, serving out the remainder of the four-year term on the conservation commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. You've appointed Lynn to the conservation commission. At this point, um, I think Tim's just joined us, so if you want, we can, um, pause the last few nominations and, um, give the floor to Tim. Um, so Tim is the, um, are you the director of the industrial development corp or the president?
Executive director, Charlie.
Director. Great. Thanks so much for taking the time to join us tonight.
Well, thanks for having me. I'd love to be there in person, but obviously that's not going to happen. Thank you all. What I, uh, as you know, Charlie, I try to get around all the select boards, uh, at least once a year, just to let them know, um, economically what's going on in the county. Highs and lows and, um, obviously, uh, this is a low point for sure and will continue to be, uh, for two to three years. It's going to be a long, challenging, uh, return for sure. Basically, what we've been doing, uh, since the COVID, uh, activity has, has started and the mandates that the governor has placed on people and communities is basically just trying to get information out. We're trying to funnel it to everyone we can regarding the, uh, cares, um, federal legislation and what the programs are, trying to get questions answered. Basically, we've been focused mainly on, um, probably four different areas of, of getting information out there. And those areas consist of, um, diversified ag. I see Mark's with us. I'm hoping Mark's getting, uh, information. There's, um,
Yeah.
Other call of the moral, um, that we're sending out as well for, um, with Senator Leahy's. So that we were looking at diversified ag, we're looking at manufacturing, we're looking at small businesses, another sector. And then the last one is municipalities. So we're, we try not to, even though it may appear that we inundate people with the information, we're trying to control it somewhat, screen it. You know, for, for an example, for municipalities, there are some programs that we just shared. Actually, the other one I would share that is probably falls under small businesses, sole proprietors. Sole proprietors, uh, fall and fall into a gray area in the sense that they can't apply for unemployment benefits because for the most part, they haven't paid in. But they can, um, there is a discussion trying to figure out how to assist sole proprietors. And sole proprietors can register ahead of time, uh, and get in the queue. There's not a program, there's no program details as of such just yet, but there will be coming down the pike. So if you're in the queue, uh, you're registered, then you'll be notified of what the programs are moving forward.
That's good. A quick question about that. Do you know if the, the funding source for sole proprietors is primarily coming from the feds? Or do you know if the state is making any moves towards, um, that?
My, my, if I was, I don't know for sure. I would guess it's coming from the feds. What we've heard from the state is they're sort of holding off on programs until they see what the fed programs are. For example, VIDA, if people are familiar with VIDA, which is Vermont Economic Development Authority, they were looking at a 1% um, disaster loan. And they were put on hold by the legislature until they're waiting to see how, how the, um, care package rolled out and what it consisted of. So my guess is sole proprietor will be initially federal money and then probably followed up after that.
Thank you.
We also, um, we're trying to communicate with all the municipalities in the county as well. The one that just came out was, um, information relative to the WIC program, which you may have, um, you may receive some calls on as well. So, um, any information we're getting, we're trying to decipher who's that, uh, who is the best recipient of it. And it, and there's some information that is appropriate for, um, for all four or five, uh, categories and we'll send it off to everyone. So we're continuing to focus on that. Um, we continue to get calls daily with questions. Uh, I definitely do not have all the answers, but we have over the years built up some strong relationships. And we can reach out to SBA, VIDA, um, Department of Labor and usually get a, we've been able to get some responses within the day, so we can get back to folks so that they can, uh, continue on their way. In terms of, uh, one of the programs being the PPP, Payroll Protection Plan, um, we're hearing some issues with that. Some banks have chosen not to participate, so that can be a, an issue. Some banks are only dealing with their clientele because they don't have the capacity to do, uh, all requests coming in. So we're trying to keep an eye on that as well and trying to focus, uh, if, if that's the case where someone cannot find a bank, we will connect them with SBA and, and try to find them someone, uh, an op, a funding, um, branch that will fund them. So, um, so that's where we're focused. That's where our energy's been for the most part. Open to feedback, uh, open to questions, uh, but we, um, we're, I'm working from the office, but everyone else, I say everyone, it's, uh, Connie Burns works, uh, part, two days a week, who's actually working probably more like four now. My assistant and then, um, Elizabeth Nance works one day a week. So I'm the only one in the office, but we are communicating and, um, moving things forward. So if there's any questions or comments.
Yeah, quick question. Um, I know from personal experience, there's been kind of a, as you mentioned, kind of a, a diversity of responses to the, the PPP and SBA loans for small businesses, depending on who, that who, you know, the company's lending institution is. So if we have constituents, um, in our town that are having trouble accessing that, is, is it, is that something that the development, uh, corporation can help support? If I, for like direct folks to you in terms of matchmaking with a lending institution?
For sure. Yeah.
Okay, great. That's good to know.
We've got the, um, well, as I said before, we have a great relationship with Darcy Carter, who's the director of the SBA for Vermont. Uh, she's been great at turning around. Um, she's been great about turning around responses. I shared with her about the issue with a company, a small business, having a hard time finding a bank. And she said, uh, if that continues to be true, just contact, she, she gave me the name for their, uh, small business loan officer and we can connect them and move forward from there. I would just, I would just encourage you, Jacob, to, um, any question, don't hesitate to have them call myself or Connie. Uh, I think there's a couple of emails out there with our contact information. If we don't have the answer, we'll find it for them for sure and, uh, help them get through.
That's great.
You know, there's been.
Well, thank you.
The other piece I would share is that it's a moving target. Um, one thing we just learned on Friday is that the, the $10,000 disaster loan, which is more or less a, uh, forgiven loan, uh, what we found out was that, uh, it's not necessarily 10,000 for everyone. The stipulation that just came out on Friday was it's a thousand per employee. So if you've got five employees, yeah, that's, that's real new. So that's going to be a, that may be a surprise to some folks when they get into it. So if you got 10 employees, you're. So if you got 10 employees, you're good, if you got five, you're not gonna see the $10,000, so.
But it's capped, right, so if you have 12 employees, it's still 10,000?
Right, still capped at 10,000, right. So that's, that's, that's sort of a sign of things to come, I think. There's gonna be continuous changes, you know, you talked about the sole proprietor, that's not even been established yet as to what they're gonna do, so. You know, we expect some activity there, and we just don't know what it is yet, so.
Tim, I did have one business owner ask me a question. I'm not sure if you know the answer to this or not, but they were looking at, on one hand, they could go after one of these loans to essentially keep their employees on payroll and make it through this. On the other hand, they were looking at laying off all their employees and allowing them to collect unemployment. And one of the things he wasn't sure of was whether or not through all of this, if the layoffs employer, employers are essentially being forced to make are gonna affect their unemployment insurance rates. Do you know if that's?
That is, that is not true Charlie, so that, no one's unemployment rate will change because of this. They, they made that clear to us, that if they go in with whatever the rating is, I don't know how they all work, but if it's a rating of two, they're gonna come out of this with a rating of two, so. There would be no changes, no changes at all.
Good, that's what I figured, I just didn't know if that was something that had been formally put down in ink somewhere.
Yeah, it's, we've, we've got it on multiple documents.
Okay.
So you can share that, share that with them as well. We, you know, that, that's one of those, those gray areas, do you go with the, you know, the payroll protection plan, or do you go payroll, or excuse me, with, with unemployment? You know, it's a decision any, all companies have to make. One, the initial thoughts with the PPP is that it's only for eight weeks. This almost has the, the makings of going much longer than eight weeks. I wouldn't say much, but longer than eight weeks, so that might be a, something they may have to look at. Or, I guess they can always go on unemployment after the PPP runs out, so.
Yeah.
I have another question too, specific to the PPP, I know that there was, I know that the intention is if, if your employees are, you know, kept a full staffing, that that loan will be forgiven. I've heard a fair amount of suspicion around the fed's willingness to follow through with loan forgiveness, given their track record with, you know, like education loans and whatnot, and so I'm just wondering, is that been, is that fully confirmed at this point, kind of baked into the plan? That there was like a zero risk of forgiveness for, for companies that maintain full payroll employment? Or is that still something that's provisional or aspirational, that there's some risk behind whether or not the feds will follow through with that?
Jacob, I haven't heard of any concern of it not being followed through with, as long as you maintain that level of employment, and the date I've seen is September 1st of this year.
That, okay, me.
Go ahead.
Sorry, so the, the, the date, it's, it, employment has to be maintained, not just through the, the length of the loan, but up to September 1st.
Right, exactly. So, so I think that one, and that one's been out there quite a bit in documentation, I think they would have a hard time going back on that one.
So, and a lot of the, the, you know, concern about is just looking at the way the feds have handled student loan forgiveness. Their, their, their track record on that has been really abysmal, for lack of a better word, and so I think there was a fair amount of suspicion around, like, whether or not that was actually fully confirmed, or still kind of pending or intentional.
Yeah, I, I mean, where I get some comfort in that is that you've had Senator Leahy and his, his staff on the front line of this discussion, and I think
Good point.
You know, I think that they would be, they've been advocating for this, and I think they, you know, with Leahy's positioning in the Senate, I think he would make sure that that is, is maintained, so.
That makes sense, cool, thank you.
So there are, I, I would share, and I, I think we've shared this with the municipality as well, and we're trying to get it out to businesses, but there's two more town halls where people can call in, they had one last week on the program that I thought was very good. We've sent out, I think your town clerk has them, but there's two this week, I think one, one on one tomorrow, and one on Thursday at 2 o'clock. Both covering different topics, one is on the unemployment piece, and then the other one is on, I think it's small business and the sole proprietor, so. I'll share that, make sure you have it, but those are, if you can get the word out on those, you basically call in. I think the last one last week had 900 people listening, and you can text in a question if you have them. But I found that to be very useful, because those are the people, it's usually the commissioners or Department of Labor, or Economic Development, or whatever the case is, so. I think those are the ones that, if people have questions, those are good, good opportunities to, to have a conversation on them, so.
Awesome. Any other questions for Tim, when we got him? If not, Tim, thanks so much for joining us, you're welcome to stick around if you want to.
Is Roger on yet?
No, so Roger did email this afternoon, just said that he isn't gonna be available to join us.
I'll, I'll stick around for a while, I'll, I'll mute myself, and, but thank you for having me, appreciate it, and if I was to leave you with anything, Charlie is, don't hesitate for anyone, you know, on any of those questions like you had, or Jacob had, feel free to have him give us a call, and we'll be sure to get him the answer.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for all you.
While we're on visitors, we can pivot, Larry and Anita, did you have anything specific for visitors?
The only thing I noticed is on your appointments, I wondered if you would, the board would consider a person to act as coordinator to their, our website, to get that website up to date.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if we have to, I mean, we have a web, we have a, actually Zach, Zach's never been formally appointed as our web person, he's a hire, we hired him to do it. We don't have an official appointment of a person to be the liaison though. So we can certainly appoint somebody to be the liaison to the webmaster if we want to.
I, I just think it's a good idea, the website has been
Yeah.
Seen as some people's site for some length of time.
Yeah, I, I know, and I, I had plans to get together with Zach two weeks ago at this point, to start to go over it, and that kind of went out the window. Your, your overall point is really well taken, that there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen, whether it's just updating information about who's on boards, to a complete overhaul of how we do certain things to make it more functional.
I believe we have a select board member that is fairly knowledgeable about websites?
It's not me, for playing Hollywood, I'm looking down to my.
I've done some website design, I mean, I'd be happy to work on it, but I don't know what kind of platform he uses, or what his your arrangement is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can, we can chat more offline if you're interested in working with him. Zach does all the design and content and stuff, basically our job is to give him content and then work with him on formatting and that kind of stuff. So at a minimum, one thing is gonna be to just basically troll the entire site for anything that's wrong, like board's not accurate, things that haven't been updated properly, that's kind of like one bucket, the other bucket's gonna be like whole-scale redesign, and he's got a lot of ideas of how to do that, I just haven't had a chance to go over that with him. So if you're interested in hooking up with him via Zoom or something, that's certainly something we can get you set up with.
I, maybe.
We can talk about that, you can let that percolate in your head, and we can. Anything else Larry and Anita, for visitors?
No, nothing.
Do, anything for visitors? Hey Sue?
Oh, no, sorry, no, I have nothing.
That's okay. Great, then with no objection, let's pivot back and finish the appointments. The next up is Town Newsletter Editor, this is an appointment for one year, Suzanne's term expires this year. Are there any nominations for Town Newsletter Editor?
I'll nominate Suzanne.
Great, you have a nomination for Suzanne, are there any other nominations? Hearing none will close nominations, all those in favor of Suzanne DeWah, serving as the Town Newsletter Editor for one year, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions, congratulations. These next ones are the really fun ones, Inspector of Lumber, Shingles, and Wood, this is a one-year term, the appointment expires this year, Wendy Howard. Do we have a nomination for Inspector of Lum, Lumber, Shingles, and Wood?
I'll, I'll nominate Wendy Howard, it's a very important job.
Great, so we have a nomination for Wendy Howard, are there any other nominations? Hearing none will close nominations, all those in favor of Wendy Howard, serving a term of one year as the Inspector of Lumber, Shingles, and Wood, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, motion carries. Next up is Tree Warden, this is a term of one year, Charlie Hancock, term expiring, are there any nominations for Tree Warden?
I'll nominate Charlie.
Got a nomination for Charlie. Any other nominations? Hearing none will close nominations, all those in favor of Charlie Hancock, serving a one-year term as Tree Warden, signify by saying aye.
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 You're on mute Jacob, so you gotta like, do the
Sorry.
Aye. You can wave your hand if you want, but awesome. Any objections, or, yeah, abstentions? Great, carries, thank you very much. Next up is the all-important Ware of Coal, this is a one-year term expiring this year, Jacob. Yes, your term's up, so any nominations for Ware of Coal?
I nominate Jacob, if he's up to it.
I appreciate the irony, I accept the nomination.
We have the nomination of Jacob Recusen for Ware of Coal, are there any other nominations? There are none will close nominations, all those in
I want that nomination.
What's that?
Just kidding.
I see her.
All those in favor of Jacob Recusen, serving a one-year term as Ware of Coal, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, congratulations Jacob.
Look forward to another good year of weighing to come.
Yeah. All right, thanks everybody for hanging in through that, appointments are always kind of a task each year. That brings us to Public Works. So, only two things that I had under here on the agenda was grant updates, which I don't believe there are any at this time, Mark or Michael, can you confirm that?
Nothing new. And some of the grants are being withheld at this time, because they're deemed non-essential, so we're not gonna be allowed to work on any of them. There are, there's only one that this may affect us on, and that was the one I was going to use on Hill West to do some ditching and stone lining.
Okay, yeah.
It's the same grant I had previously been using on North Hill to do this, ditching and stone lining.
The Better Back Roads?
Uh, excuse me Mark?
The Better Back Roads one?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That was through back.
We didn't have anything for Jim, for any of those projects.
No, we were not going to be eligible at this time. I think we'll be eligible next, in two years, again.
Yeah, because we used the money last year, so, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, great. Other thing on the agenda was just the fixed radar speed signs, so the application to VTранs went into Richard Blackmore beginning of last week, I think, that had the supporting documentation and the application to essentially put the signs in the towns, in the states right away, so that's processing now. Michael did, remember you, you were gonna talk to Lafayette, have you actually locked them in?
No, I have not. I spoke with them once last fall, they said they were only doing emergency work then, and they were booked and shut down for the winter season. They said let's base with them again this spring.
Okay, well, at some point in the next week or so, if you could check in with them and see if, what their availability is like for sometime late May, early June, I imagine VTранs will get our application processed by then.
Late May, early June, okay.
Yeah.
It will do.
Great. Only other note that I had was paving estimates, have we had any of those come in yet?
No, none of them have come in, I talked to four different contractors, and one of them said it would be within two days, and that was three weeks ago. I have not had any replies back with numbers. Three of the four did come to Montgomery and look at the road to take measurements.
Okay.
I will touch base with them all this week, because I had planned on the next meeting, which I believe, I don't have a calendar in front of me, would be the 22nd?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, fires opening and going over them, so I'm worried about all of them this week, and see if they're still planning on submitting quotes or anything.
Okay. Yeah, that's the 20th, so we'll put a mark on it, 2:30 and 4:20. Great. All right, awesome, anything else under roads and bridges?
Uh, not too much, mud season is turning out to be rather kind of mild for us. We've been keeping up with things pretty well, if we get a mud hole, we've been fortunate, roads have been freezing up within a day or two. So we've been able to access them and do repairs. We're still finding some of the coldest spots are just starting to thaw out over the weekend or today, but they're, they're quite minor and small at this time. Our only concern has been getting materials, as all the quarries gravel pit has, have been shut down. But Greg from GW Tatro, which is actually the owner, he's been very good about giving us access to their pit, so we've still been able to go in and get some gravel. Uh, I'm trying to reach leeches, I would like a little bit more of that blue crushed stone we were using. Nobody's got back to me, nobody's answered the phone at the office, so we may not be able to get any more of that this spring.
Okay.
If we can't, well, I'll just have to use gravel in this place.
Are you guys using Tatro's loader, or did you, you didn't move our loader up there, did you?
We're using Tatro's loader, yeah.
Okay, great.
No, we need ours right in the yard to load gravel and materials.
Yeah.
I did get a delivery, I put an order in a little while back, we've got a large order of culverts that came in, so we're good to go with them this summer.
Good.
The only other thing I kind of have is I know Blaine and Mark have both kind of mentioned about their contracts, Wayne just kind of curious where his stands at this time, and
Yeah, so we have, toward the end of the agenda, under new business, we've got the Public Works Road Personnel Discussion, and so we will do the hire, and then we've also got some tweaks to your contract and to Mark's contract, so we'll do all that at the end of the meeting tonight, and then we should have those ready for you guys tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay, you do have Blaine's application?
Yeah.
Okay, what he was asking for paint and everything, so you've seen it. I know I dropped it off at the office.
Yep. We'll go over that towards the end of the meeting, yep.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you had the application, that information.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Okay. I, all I will have for this evening.
Awesome. Two, two quick questions, one neighbor up on Black Falls was wondering around the culvert there, just a little ways up past my place. I know it's like flagged, and there's enough riprap there to keep it stable, but they're just wondering if there was a, a target on full repair, I figured it might be a bit with the current circumstances.
It's gonna be a while, yes, both those culverts are gonna have to be replaced.
Oh, full cover replacement, got it.
Yes, yes, and same way, like, as far as, we don't have our own excavator, so I did get Scott, oh, I, I did have to do an emergency repair on Hill West above the coal spring. So, I mean, contractors are shut down, they're not allowed to work, but anything ID, emergency, they can come in and help us with, is what Scott Gudjou did last Friday. They can come in and help us with is what Scott Goddard did last Friday and again today. He came in, he checked with his attorneys and things, made sure he was allowed to come work for us and he got a green light, so. But no, those two past your place, I've got 13 just on the village end to replace. I haven't even started a list for the center.
Okay.
My same way, I don't know, on target, you know, dig safety, they're only doing emergency work at this time.
Yeah.
And actually, I mean, it's still kind of wet to be replaced at home.
Yeah, yeah, it's still, we were not fully dried out yet.
No, not at all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the other question was just on Brady Road. I don't know if I just lost sight of that, or that's still the sort of on hold pending, you know, stay-at-home release or whatever the availability is for the crew to get the bridge swapped in there.
Oh, that was.
Was that done? Did I miss that? Are we done? Like that was?
Oh, yeah, that was last summer.
How did I miss that?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, oh, I know what the question was. That's right. I'm like, wait, even as I'm saying these words, I'm like, I felt like we did this. It was the, Charlie, I was gonna ask about the email that we got from the bridge inspector. That's what that was about, calling that out and wondering what was, that's, sorry, same bridge, different issue.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, so how did that, how, so the first part of that was clarifying with him which bridge he was talking about, the temporary one or the permanent one. And I think he had, his concern was the permanent bridge, which I thought was interesting because that's why the temporary one's there. And so I left it with him that if he had any questions about the temporary bridge, which is essentially a temporary indefinite at this point, he could let us know if he had any inspection problems, but he never got back to me, so I assume that the answer of the temporary bridge is going to be, you know, there for the duration was good enough for him.
Yep, cool, thanks.
Anything else under roads and bridges?
Yeah, I realize annual financial plan is due. I'll get it done for the next meeting so we can sign it. I'll talk to Jim Coda and get it done for the town.
Okay.
We have to do it every year for the class one roads and, and everything, so. Just put it on the agenda, annual financial plan, that'll remind me.
Okay, great. Anything else for roads and bridges? If not, we'll jump to buildings and grounds. I mean, the only note here is regarding the 98 Main Street building. And the story there is that there's been no response from the United Postal Service since the last email went out to them, I guess, as they're dealing with the COVID-19 stuff. So that's basically, the ball is in their court and there's no news on that front. Anything else from you, Mike, for buildings and grounds?
No, I don't think so. Everything's, you know, you said the first buildings and grounds are pretty quiet.
Yep.
Actually, I did have a question. It was talked about again as far as putting the lawnmower out, the contract. Did that actually happen?
Yeah. Didn't happen, but Suzanne and I had chatted about that. It looks like Suzanne has stepped away for a second. But we do have that pulled back up, and so I think Suzanne and I were going to work to get that out like as soon as possible.
Okay, I just curious if it gone out already or not, because it may be getting kind of short-term, because I know a lot of them will probably start doing cleanup anytime, any day.
Alright, let me pull that back out. Thank you for the reminder of that. Let me pull that back up and take a look at that with Suzanne and we'll see if we can shoot that out.
Yeah, yeah, because I said, I know a lot of them probably start to rake in and clean up here. Like, I mean, it could be starting any day.
And do we know, does anybody know, are they conce, are they considered essential? Like, do they have a waiver?
Oh, good question. No, that may put it on hold. I was.
I mean, if I can't get my haircut, I don't know about cutting my lawn, so.
Exactly, I would destroy.
Good analog.
There, there was activity, there was activity in, by landscapers in Ennisburg at that, at the Hannaford's complex, just a couple of days ago.
Sorry, you talked to me about the RCP on the lawn or landscaping?
Yeah, we had, we had brought that up. So Suzanne, you had emailed me a copy of that and I, that just kind of fell off my radar. Is that, is that RFP ready to go out or do we need to tweak that and edit it more?
The only thing that's missing is I know that typically, from what I could gather, there's like some standard jargon at the bottom for submission.
Okay.
That's all that, I didn't know if Montgomery had like their own version that needed to be cut and pasted in.
Alright, well, if that's all that's missing, then we can easily swap that in and then get it out this week to the different contractors.
Yeah.
So, alright, I'll make a note to take a look at that. It's in my inbox, so I'll take a look at that tomorrow. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else under buildings and grounds? Okay, if not, we'll go to item C. This is just the transportation alternatives program, the TAP program. So the last word on this was that the state had revived and was issuing a new at-the-ready consultant list. So we had, we had chosen Dubois King. Linda Blash, who's our consultant working with us, advised us basically to pause for a second before we engage them for the new list to come out. The state did issue their new list of at-the-ready consultants. Dubois King is still on it. The committee reviewed the new list and based on the feedback, we're gonna still go with Dubois King. So I let Linda know that and she has the paperwork essentially rolling on getting them locked in as our at-the-ready consultant or at-the-ready engineering firm, I should say. So, little hiccup there. She also did clarify that the TAP project is not one at this point that she thinks the funding is going to get pulled for. But she's not 100% certain, so we'll continue as though the money will be there, I guess.
Yes. Okay.
So the next up is just to wait to hear back from her on the next steps with Dubois King.
This is a side note to that. We're down to 23 feet of land left from the shoulder of the road to the top of the riverbank.
Yeah.
Oh my.
How close to the pole?
I didn't measure, but I might still have approximately the same. It's not in any danger falling in at this time.
Oh, okay. I had me down there.
Next on the agenda, item D is just an update on FEMA. So our scoping meeting with them, we've had our preliminary phone chat two weeks ago, I guess maybe. Next up is our scoping meeting. That is scheduled for April 20th. So that's when we'll most likely hop on a Zoom call like this and review our spreadsheet and the documentation, basically looking at what we're going to get reimbursed for, what we're going to ask to get reimbursed for. So that's on the 20th. I had sent out an email and I apologize if I haven't looked through all the responses yet, but does this Thursday, the 9th work, Michael and Mark, for you guys?
What, what time are you thinking?
What time works for you guys?
I'm flexible with it.
How about you, Mark? What's a good time for you?
Around 10 o'clock.
10 AM?
Yeah.
Alright, let's hold Thursday at 10 AM open. And then between now and then, I'll confirm whether we'll do that via Zoom or if we'll need to do that in person in a way that tries to distance as much as possible. Some of this is going to be looking at hard copies of material that's not uploaded to a computer, so it might be hard to do this via Zoom.
Yeah.
So let's hold Thursday at 10 AM open and we'll figure it out between now and then.
Larger space to spread out, we could possibly use the town garage.
Yep, yep. Town garage or even the conference room, if it's just three or four of us.
The conference should be larger off, but if it isn't, you know, we use the garage.
Yeah. Okay, great. So that's it for FEMA. We'll get that together anticipation of the 20th. We've already done visitors, so we'll move on from that. Next up is water commission issues. The only thing on our radar right now for the water commission is the consumer confidence report just came in. So that needs to go out by July 1st.
Yeah.
Fortunately, unfortunately, that came in Friday afternoon and Aaron had just mailed out the last round of water bills. So we're gonna have to wait and mail the postcard out with the link to the CTC CCR with the next round of bills.
Okay.
And those, and those go out July 1st. So CCR, what do they call it? The CCR certificate of being sent is due the 1st of July. So we really have to make sure those bills go out July 1st, so that we can sign that on July 1st and email to them saying we did it.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Aaron's aware of that, so she's on it. Zach has the stuff up on the website already, so we're good to go there.
Okay, I'll try to look it over just to make sure.
Okay. Let me, let me just make a note. I'll, I'll email you the link to it because it's up on the website.
Okay, it's on the website?
Yeah. I don't know if you can find it directly via the town website or if it's a link that you have to enter. I don't know if it's a link to the town website, it should be, but I'll email it to you anyway, just to make sure you get it.
Okay, yeah, now look it over.
Alright, any other water commission business?
Not as far as I know.
Okay, great. So with that, we're gonna hop to old business. The first item here is just COVID-19. So this is just updates, any other discussion people have, just to tick through some quick updates on this end. So I can't remember if we discussed this or not at our last board meeting, but we did run a age filter on our voter checklist to come up with a list of individuals in the community that are above a certain age that would be deemed most vulnerable. So that list is now being worked on by a team of three or four volunteers to coordinate check-ins, so like phone calls, making sure people have what they need and just a voice to talk to if some of these folks are by themselves. So we do have a crew working on that. Peg, Lois, Judith are working on that. JP has reached out to assist us with any of our needs around the food pantry, so they've been in touch with Lois. Jay basically has said to all the communities around here that they want to use the last couple of their food orders, I guess, that they're slated for to help stock local food pantries. So David Marshawn's been in contact with Lois around that. Quick update about the rec department. I did have a talk with Peg today and I left it up to the board to decide what to do, but did advise them that they may want to close the rec center facility there in town. Just given everything that's going on with COVID-19, we've had a few people who've not complained, but made the town aware that there's folks gathering there. I drove by the other day and there was two couples playing tennis and about five kids playing basketball. Also, we don't have the capacity to clean the equipment or any of the stuff there, which does present a potential issue, so I did advise her to, to ask the board about potentially shutting down the rec department or the rec center for an indefinite term. Take the nets down, put some signage up. We can't block the road because it's a shared driveway. But if we can limit access, that might limit people's propensity to gather there. I think that the rec department is going to move forward with planning for summer camp, but without any kind of a start date. You know, it might be July, could be August, I'm not sure. I think they were thinking late May, but that might be really optimistic. Or I'm sorry, early June. Anyway, so they're gonna get the things in place to have it, should they be able to, but acknowledging that we really don't know. And the last update has to do with the town office. So the town office has been basically fully closed for two weeks this Thursday, so Thursday will mark two weeks of full closure. Liz and Aaron have been working remotely, which is good, but not super practical. Genevieve does not have a good internet connection at her house, so she can't work from her house. Liz has Bruin. And Aaron is able to do stuff remotely, but needs to take care of getting the mail, which Liz has to do. So I talked with them today and what they are probably going to be looking to do, if there's no objection from the board, is to reopen in-person operations at the town office, but keep the office closed to the public. So they would be back in there next week, essentially taking back up their normal functions, handing any of, handling any of the public's business remotely as they can. We can then talk about doing any appointment visits to the office, but I know there were some concerns about having people in there and what that could do for, for cleaning. So that's just a quick list of updates that have come into the, the office or that have come in that I've heard of. Any questions or other comments or other updates or discussion points?
Ask a question?
Yeah, of course, Sue.
Um, how is it working with getting bills paid?
Yeah, so great question. So, yeah, Erin is able to generate the warrants. And so once she has a schedule with Liz about handing off the mail, she's gonna keep generating them. There is a stack in the office that we need to sign. So at the end of this meeting, what I was hoping to do with the board is set up some, ideally some day that works for everybody over an hour or two period where we could essentially do drop-ins to sign stuff, because we're gonna have contracts that need signature, warrants that need signature. So at the end of this, we can coordinate that, but if there's like, you know, for Thursday afternoon or something like that where folks are available, you know, we can basically do a one after another thing at the town office if that works with folks.
Okay, so, okay, so bills will get paid within the next month or so?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a food bank question. Is there? I've heard from a couple of folks that are planting gardens and had asked, and I had the same question myself. Good, what the current status of drop-off, like coordination, timing for Montgomery food donations, some garden surplus looks like, if that's feasible or organized?
That would be a great question for Lois. Lois is kind of spearheaded the food.
Just have them call Lois.
Okay, simple as that.
Yep, four, five, six, one.
Perfect.
Remember, and.
Cool. Awesome, that's great.
Any other updates or questions or things folks want to talk about in regard to this?
Charlie, can I?
Yeah.
Two more things I thought of. Vermont Electric Co-op has economic development grants, although not very large, but they were, we found them to be. Elizabeth was looking at them and they're $750. So I think the first deadline's close. It might have been April 1st, but there's another deadline in June. And so we were looking at doing two applications, one for you folks and one for Richford, just to get 750 and we can have a discussion later as to how you might use that, but I don't know if there's anything that that might be relevant to regarding the VCRD community visit. Is there something where you might be able to use the 750 for economic development to do a feasibility study or something? So I throw that out there. We're more than willing to track that down and, and submit the application for you.
Yeah, I mean, any money we can get to support that project, we will happily take. So, do you know, is the money, I assume the money is pegged towards something having to do with electrical service or something around that?
No, I think it's just an economic development in general.
Awesome. Yeah, then we could certainly use that. We're gonna talk about that in a second more broadly. So was that $750 or?
$750, yeah.
I was hoping you'd say $1,000. Yeah, I mean, hey, every, every little, every little bit counts and we can certainly put that towards some fraction of the engineering or preliminary engineering or planning work around that project.
So I'll, I'm speaking, I'll speak with Elizabeth tomorrow and have her frame it up that way and then we'll share it with you as we move forward.
Awesome.
But things are a little But things are a little, she has some idle time, so she can probably pull that together in the next few weeks and then we can get it in, be done with it. That was, that was one. The other thing Elizabeth is gonna work on, on our website is just a overall spreadsheet of businesses that are open and closed and what the details are.
Oh, great.
She'll reach out, we'll shoot an email off to the clerks and as you get updates, we can include them in the, in the whole list. So.
Awesome.
Those are the two.
Great, thanks, Tim.
And I'm gonna sign off. Thanks again for having me. Appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Tim. Have a great night.
Everyone take care.
You, thanks. Anything else on the, on COVID-19 anyone's got?
What are the logistics gonna be for signing warrants and permits and such? I know we're about to get to that, but I figure just.
Yeah, I mean, we can just talk about it right now. So logistics for signing it are gonna be that, basically, the documents are all housed at the office. And we all have to figure out how to get there and sign them. Once the office opens back up and they're in there, it's gonna be easier. Someone will be there to let you in and sign something. So this might be the only week we have to do this. So to that end, like, what are folks' schedules like, say, Thursday afternoon or Thursday during the day? I mean, I can go down there and open the office up and be there if folks want to come in during a certain time to sign stuff.
My schedule is pretty open.
Yeah.
We're meeting at 10:00 Thursday, then we can, I can do it after that.
That, okay. Jacob, what's your, what's your schedule Thursday like?
It, it's so surreal. I'm like completely jam books these days. I feel it's a great problem to have, like up to like 50-hour weeks these days. I think I could, I'm just trying to like, what's like predictable?
You know what also Jacob is that if we've got, if we have Suzanne, Mark and myself, that's a, that's a quorum of signatures.
Okay, sure.
So if you want, if that works, then Mark, we can take care of signing that Thursday at 10:00 AM. And then Suzanne, you wanna just meet me at the office at like 9:45? You can run in, sign them and then take off before Mark and Michael get there.
Okay.
All right, cool.
If for whatever reason something comes up, I'm generally available, you know, before 8:30 or after 5:00, I can come and, you know, do whatever. Or if you're really desperate or driving around or wanna like swing out my place, I can meet you at the top of the driveway or whatever.
Yeah, we could do that too. But, okay, if that works, Thursday, Thursday works, then we can get them signed that morning and they'll let you know if we need anything else.
Yeah, just let me know. I can, I'll be, I'll make myself available as need be for sure.
Okay, perfect. All right, then we'll keep moving. Next item is the electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations. Suzanne, were there any updates on that front?
Yeah, so I actually wanted to ask you guys. I did get the, all the information from the company. We can have it ordered. Erin did say that right now it's non-essential, so she's not really gonna move on that. But the other thing was with this potential street gaping that we're doing, it would be kind of silly to get all the equipment, install it this summer and then tear up that parking lot and potentially have a better spot to put it, maybe across the street or something like that. So I did speak to Jennifer, who was in charge of the grant. And she said that according to the grant's definition, we have through the summer of 2021 to get this whole project finished. And if, for whatever reasons such as streetscaping, we weren't able to do it in that time, we can apply for an extension. So. It's not really pressing at the moment, I guess, is what I'm saying.
How, do you know how easy it is to relocate the equipment once it's established?
I, I mean, I wouldn't think it's that easy because it has to be electrically tied into the building. And then the, the actual like station itself comes in a bollard, which is buried, you know, five feet in the ground or however far.
Yeah.
So it'd be like, it'd be quite a waste of money to install it all and then have to pay to have it uninstalled and re.
Yeah. I mean, like the, the uninstallation and moving, you know, in the grand scheme of all that can happen is probably like a drop in the bucket as far as the cost of that. I think you're right that to install them now. So, because just like timeline-wise, we probably wouldn't be looking at starting construction on anything until spring of 2022.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so I mean, if they're cool with us sitting on it until the summer of 2022, then.
I think, I mean, the worst-case scenario is that we buy the equipment and end up just having to buy the equipment ourselves. I mean, the, the cost of the whole thing was not, you know, it was like, total was, I think, under $10,000. So if, you know. I, I don't know. I suppose, I mean, that if. No, you can't wait until 2022, would that be significant in the grand scheme of the whole streetscaping funding project or?
No, I mean, like, I guess the thing is that it's not super, it's not a super high percentage of the overall, you know, cost of the product or anything. I bet we could also find funding when that time comes to put in EV charging stations too. So like, yeah, the other thing to do would be to say, hey, I mean, so have we, do we get, is this free reimbursement? We buy them and we send them back the?
Yeah.
Invoice, yeah. I mean, if we bought them, sent the invoice in and then sat on them, I guess they could tell us to send them back. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure, I guess. Because if we're, if we're not gonna put them in until 2022 and they want the grant done in summer of 2021, then we might not actually be able to make that happen.
Yeah.
We might be in a case of actually saying that we're gonna give the grant back.
Yeah.
So I guess if you just want to clarify with her if the 2022 date doesn't work anymore, that might be kind of the trigger as far as how we act on that.
I mean, yeah, because the alternative is that we could buy them and install them and, but, you know, it would just be a matter of working around them. Assuming that the streetscaping tackled that area of the Grange parking lot.
Yeah, which it would. Because then we could put them in and factor that into the redesign or put them in. I mean, if we put them in, if we put them in, we'd have them for over a year before any of the work started on the streetscape project. Yeah, I don't know. Jacob, Mark, any thoughts on this?
I mean, they're just going by the Grange Hall, right?
Yeah.
I mean. I don't see any reason why we can't just put them in.
Yeah.
For the streetscape.
We could. And, I mean, like Charlie says, ultimately, like, you know, probably the cost to dig them back out and relocate them, judging from what I budgeted for installing them, it would probably be like, you know, a few, I don't know, maybe like three grand. If we already have all the equipment and that would be a high estimate, I'm thinking.
Yes.
That'd be a very high estimate.
Yeah.
Well, that's the electric, I think the electrical was, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I think the electric to install them was around 1,500. And then it was work from like Michael and his crew to dig it out and do that sort of thing. Yeah.
If we were to have to relocate it, it, because of a streetscape, there's no reason it couldn't, wouldn't be part of the the streetscape bond vote, part of that, part of that budget.
Yeah.
No reason, there's no reason for the town to have to accept the cost of the relocation.
That's true.
But we should just go ahead and put them in and.
This has been a three-year project. This should, this should have been going on a long time ago.
Yeah.
I thought that was a wall-mount unit.
We ended up going with the freestanding one because located at the Grange, it wouldn't reach from the wall.
Okay, well, that may create an issue because we do not know where that underground fuel tank is, the heat and oil tank. It's in that vicinity.
Oh.
I don't know. I mean, we may be fine. I don't, I mean, I just know the tank's in that vicinity, but nobody knows its exact location.
Okay, that's the no longer functioning fuel tank, right?
No, it is.
It is functioning.
It's still.
How do we fill it if we don't know where it is?
There are filler pipes attached to the building that go underground and.
They should, they should be able to stake that, if there's an active tube line connection, then, you know, P and P can probably come up for 100, a couple hundred bucks and stake that line.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, just, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Or it's like, last time I was aware, it was, this was a wall-mount unit.
Yeah, all right. I, I think we should go forward with, I mean, unless it's like obvious that there's a potential overlap between projects that would be able to coordinate. In this case, it seems like quite the opposite. And like, I would just assume, see it, take advantage of the grant, zero cost to the town, we'll get it installed. There's a version of this in which the escaping doesn't happen for a considerable period of time. And then if it does, and you already have infrastructure installed, you know, we can hold on to the, you know, capital investment of the gear. And then, yeah, any of the labor will be, I would expect cheaper because there'll already be crews mobilized in terms of construction. It's not gonna be a direct mobilization just for that project. And it just seems like no harm in proceeding, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's the way I feel about it.
Awesome. So it sounds like we'll move ahead with the ordering installation. So I guess if Erin's got everything, once they're back in the office, you know, we can get the order made.
Yeah, it sounded like she just didn't really want to deal with it from, you know, permanently from home.
Okay. I think, who, who was the group? You said P and P could stake it?
Oh, yeah, they're like septic, one of any number of different, like septic contractors. I've worked with, I've worked with them in particular, but other folks as well. They have like really long extendable cameras and like locators. Where if there is like an open line between point A and point B, then they generally have some piece of gear that will be able to get you there. Whether that's scoping to see if there's an obstruction or, or like physically locating something. So if it's an active tank that we know that can fill and fluid can pour from the inlet and go to a place, then, I mean, maybe the oil company has similar gear. I wouldn't be surprised if they have that in their toolkit too. I've just used septic companies multiple times.
Not that I'm aware of, but I mean, everything is metal. We, maybe I'll just use the metal detector from Rust from the water department.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be my first, my first option.
Well, you can call. From this spring. All right. Cool. All right, awesome. So then we'll keep the ball rolling on that then. Good.
I know DigSafe, sorry, go ahead, Susan.
I'll just tell, I'll let Erin know that.
As I say to that, and I know that DigSafe has some resources in various like ground imaging equipment that's not very expensive for similar, especially if it's metal and it's close to surface. Yeah, shouldn't be, they, they can help with that as well. I've, I've worked with them on that before too.
Awesome. Oh, yeah, it can be located, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, the wastewater and the streetscape projects. So. I guess just to kind of review what's going on and how we got here. We've contracted with Hoyle Tanner to do the preliminary engineering reports for both the wastewater system and the streetscape project. They've gone through a bunch of different deliverable steps, like a 30, a 50. Working with the committees along the way to go over processing questions. And then the last deliverable they submitted was the 85% deliverable, which I sent everybody either a link to or copies of, I think, last week. Don't worry if you haven't read it yet. It's a really long, very dry document. The main takeaways, I mean, definitely, I encourage you to read it if and when you have the time, but don't feel pressured to read it right off. The, the main takeaways from that document essentially are that Hoyle Tanner went through a number of different alternatives for each of the systems. So on the wastewater system, they looked at four different conveyance and collection systems and three different treatment systems. On the streetscape side, they went through the same kind of thing, alternatives for the center and the village. Essentially, what the 85% deliverable laid out was that the most cost-effective option as far as wastewater goes is going to be with a grinder pump and low-pressure sewer system, which would feed to three different tank collection sites. Grinder pumps are essentially units that would go at each residence that does just what it sounds like. It takes the waste and it grinds the hell out of it to get it into a very small particulate matter. And then it goes through the force main to the, to the tank. It's essentially the same kind of principle as a residential septic tank, like what you guys have at your house, or I hope you do. It's just much, much bigger. And from the cost-effective way of looking at it, setting up three different collection tanks in town, one for the village and two for the center, was the most cost-effective way to go. They looked at everything from lagoon systems to different anaerobic systems, above ground, below ground. All that's detailed in the report. But at the end of the day, it was the grinder pump, force main to three different collection points that was like the most cost-effective and practical option. Briefly, they, they considered these based on water rates. So they looked at the amount of water that the water system was using to kind of get an idea of what current rates were like for water. They also did build out projections based on current use and 20-year growth for these properties. Mark was there for that meeting, I think, sat around, looked at each property, talked about potential build-out. So the system that they're looking at designing for is a system that would support 20 years of build-out and growth based on our projections, but would also position us for going beyond the 20-year period. But the projections we're using are for 20 years as far as flow rates go. It's a lot more detailed in the, in the study, so I encourage you guys to, to read it if or when you have the time. But that's basically it, is they've come down to this alternative for the wastewater. And then as far as the streetscape work, they presented to the committees last meeting, two alternatives for the village and three for the center. The alternatives that were chosen by the committee to advance were alternative B for the village, which essentially, there's schematics in the plan, you can see them, but it has to do with curbing and potentially making the green a one-way to increase traffic flow. Nothing crazy for the village. The center alternative that was selected to advance is alternative C. That's kind of like the highest build-out for the center. That would include raised crosswalks with crosswalk lights. It would include bumpouts. Essentially what they bump outs in the street to slow traffic with like planters. It would add additional on-street parking. It would be a redesign of the municipal lots. It's all in the report. So you can take a look at it. A few things that I'll just kind of caution there is that the, the alternatives are preliminary engineering. So there's still a lot of work to go and figuring out how they would actually function. That's specifically important when thinking about and talking about the streetscape project. Because if you look at the streetscape project, there's some elements there that. especially on the intersection with Route one eighteen and two forty-two, that in order to make it functional in a three-way stop that we want to make it, there's going to be some redesign in front of Sylvester's and the snowshoe, which could mean relocating or potentially losing parking spots. That's a huge deal for both Alan and Pete and John. Like that is going to be a deal breaker if we can't work with them on that. So the plans that are in that report show some work there, which is very conceptual. There hasn't been any on-the-ground surveying work to figure out exactly how many parking spaces can go where, what that would look like, how far the curb cut has to come back. So I only say that just in terms of, if you look at it, if you share it, if you talk to people about it, we just need to be really deliberate in saying that this is conceptual in nature. It's all subject to change or vision as we get more concise about stuff.
Charlie, where can you see these?
What's that, Sue?
Where can you see these reports?
So the report, I sent the report out to the full board. And then we can work with Zach to make the report available on the website this week.
Okay.
I like that they had a cornhole tournament going on in their mock-up in front of the snowshoe.
Yeah.
But to that end, it did make me wonder, do you, do we know off the, does anyone know if outdoor seating is permissible by statute or serving alcohol on premises in the front there, if that whole front area would be devoted to?
We have to figure that out somehow. I mean, I know you can do it like twigs and St. Albans does it. It's gotta be legal.
Okay, yeah.
It's just probably a way you have to do it as far as partitioning off areas.
Yeah.
So.
I know I'm jumping ahead. I was just, you know, thinking of carrots to that.
Yeah. So two other, two other quick notes I just want to make on the report. The other thing in the report that you're going to see is there's a number of maps that show different alternatives for systems, but also the preferred alternative and maps showing disposal sites. So these would be the proposed sites where we would have the tanks as well as the disposal sites or essentially big leach fields. These are positioned on these maps based on soils and location and topography and things. We have not talked to any of the landowners yet. So the next step over the next week or two is going to be reaching out to landowners to talk about the project, what we're looking at, get a feel for what their, you know, feelings are around this. The, the project would include land purchase. We'd have to buy land to house these facilities. So I just want to flag that we haven't talked to any of these landowners yet. And to get back to Sue's point, before I put the report completely out online, I did want to talk to these folks directly personally, just to give them a heads up, just so that something like this didn't drop in their lap. Because again, all this is conceptual, like there's, we're at step like three out of ninety, so we gotta be careful about how we talk about that kind of stuff. And the last note would be that with the preferred alternative for the center, that would include the town taking ownership of Route one eighteen through the center. So we would actually need to state to actually give us ownership of that road to do the work that we want to do. So those are just some quick notes on the report itself. Again, by all means, dig into it. Anybody have any questions at this point?
I just have a little information maybe to add to this. I fortunately don't have the information here in front of me, but there is a department that came by, stopped at the grads, and they are doing a wastewater study on the village, on the stormwater, on the drainage system. They're going to be coming around this summer, taking samples from the stormwater drains to see if there's any septic tied into them. They said they did the center two or three years ago. And now they want to do the village. I had that fish at the garage. I just don't have any of it here at home with me.
Yeah, you showed it to me. Yeah.
They might have seen some of it.
Awesome. Well, I'll follow up with you for their contact info so we can get that to the engineer. So that gets at something really important that we're gonna need to start doing in the coming weeks. And that's around some of the questions around need and the environmental assessment that goes along with this report. So what you're outlining about septic leachate ending up in stormwater is a great example of some of the stuff that we need to start figuring out. Essentially, to kind of back up to a high level, our main source of funding for this project is going to come through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA Rural Development Program. They're the ones that would essentially make us an offer of how much they want to loan us to, to build this system. So this engineering report, once it's finalized, which the company is doing now, is going to be given to USDA on the seventeenth of the month. USDA then reviews it and has until the end of August to respond to us essentially with a loan offer. What that means is they say, based on your report and based on all the stuff in here, we're going to give you a loan of X amount of money. And then a certain percentage of that money ends up being a grant. Now, our big nut to crack right now is that your percentage of grant is based on a number of factors. And right now, we're eligible for forty-five percent grant eligibility towards the cost of the project, towards the loan. So if they gave us a loan for X million, right now forty-five percent of that we'd be grant eligible for. Now, we can get ourselves up to seventy-five percent grant eligible, but what we have to do is document a greater need for the project. So, spring notes. One thing that we're trying to get documentation around to include in our material for them is around the source water protection area for the town's water system. Right now, we've got thirty private septic systems in the source water protection area for the town's water system. Many of those are either aged or unknown condition. That inherently presents a problem to the town's water supply. So we're pursuing some additional information around that. We're also trying to get more information around troubled or failing systems. The wastewater study committee sent out surveys about a year ago or even longer at this point, asking people the conditions of their systems in certain ways. They were good surveys, but they really didn't get to the question of, is your system failing? And that was intentional because most folks don't want to admit that because it could lead to an enforcement action. So what a few of the committee members and myself are starting to do now is reach out individually to people to get more information on the status of their systems. The idea being that if we can demonstrate enough systems in our service areas are failing or troubled, it will increase that environmental concern to maximize our, our percentage support. So we're going around, what we're going to do is I've talked to the engineering firm about this, and if we can set it up in a way where we present the information to them scrubbed of any identifying characteristics of the property, we can advance that to the USDA or the DEC without basically allowing that information to lead to an enforcement action. So people won't be telling us information about their system, fearing that it could lead to DEC coming in and putting the hammer down on them, should none of this move forward. So we're working on that front. We're also going to start re-monitoring for E. coli in the center and in the village. So MRBA helped us with that a couple of years ago. We're going to re-establish monitoring points in the center and the village to monitor for E. coli, because if we can show E. coli in the waterways, that's a pretty good giveaway that there's septic leachate coming into the streams. Caveat there would be by the village, if it's after a heavy rain event, it could be from the field. But if you demonstrate E. coli, then that would also notch us up. So that's kind of like in the next few weeks, our big task with the committees is to get all this documentation together and to the USDA so that when they come back with their offer, it's maxing out the grant eligibility portion of, of the loan. I realize this is like a lot of information, so I apologize. I'm happy to talk or answer questions.
Charlie, I've got one, it's, you know, we can't really get to individuals on their septic system, but I wonder if a geological survey, the soil surveys, if that, if the type of soil would show a greater need.
Yeah, so we've looked at soils. We've talked a lot a bit about lot size and replacement. So a lot of our systems can't replace on their own properties. They've got easements. Unfortunately, when we discussed that with the guy from USDA, he basically said, well, that's all well and good, but if I accept that as a rationale for maxing out your grant portion, any other community in Vermont could use the same rationale because we're all little villages and valleys near rivers. So it really is a case of documenting the environmental concern from failed systems, failing systems, the issues around the water source area and those things that we're going to try to work on.
So, so the email you sent today, looks like Jonathan Harry's from USDA has reviewed it.
Yeah, yep.
He had a bunch of, he had a bunch of comments.
Yep. Yeah, so John Harry's, we've gone over his comments with the engineering firm. Yeah, most of those are all good and factor in. Yeah, John is going to be one of the guys who reviews this full application and essentially comes up with the offer for us.
Yeah, yeah.
John's really concerned about cost and keeping the user, user rates low as he should be.
Yeah, he was the same one that did for the water system too. Jonathan was.
Oh. Cool.
Yeah.
So a couple other things, just again, just trying to like bring everybody up to speed on some main points here. Just on that end about user rates. So our water system is set up in a way where essentially the town bears a portion of the financial responsibility for, for debt repayment on that. Even folks that aren't on the system are helping into it. And that's, that's the way it was intentionally set up back when it was done. Or how it ended up being set up. I shouldn't say intentional because there's some history there. Anyway, it's not clear whether USDA for the wastewater system would let us set that up in a way, should the town say, hey, we want to kick in money collectively to help support this because it provides a public good for the whole town. The preliminary understanding that we got from USDA was that the cost of the system would have to be borne by the users on the system. We're trying to get some more clarity around that because what that means is that with only currently a hundred and sixty-five potential users maybe on the system, the overall cost per user skyrockets. And we really want to keep this down to like one percent of mean household income as far as what your user fees would be. So that's going to be a big, a big challenge for us is to figure out how, how that gets set up and how we can do it. So just make a mental note that like there's some, some gray area there about how that gets set up. And that also plays into eventually what we ought to bond for and how that, how that language is worded.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see how just the users are going to be able to pay for that. That's how come the water system did it that way, because the user fees was going to be so high that the whole town had to pay one of the bonds, but.
Yeah. So Lynette, not Lynette, Rebecca with USDA is kind of going back through their guidelines to kind of tease out what some options might be, like could the town take a percentage of the indebtedness and choose to pay that back through the municipal budget? I mean, she's, she's running the different options so that we've got them at this point though. It's a flag that we don't know the answer to.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah, Larry.
Did you say a hundred and sixty-five probable users?
I, that's the number that's in my head. I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say that.
That's what's on board. Yeah.
Yeah. So right now, we're looking at a hundred and sixty-five likely users. Yep.
The other question I wanted to ask, I want to go way back to about ten minutes ago. You mentioned that we would be adopting one eighteen.
Yeah, so if we, yeah.
Basically, so the town crew would take over all snow removal, maintenance and everything of Main Street to the Village and Center.
Yeah, I mean, Mark, I don't know if you know more about this or not. I mean, I think we'd have to figure out the details of that. Essentially, Larry, yeah, but I don't know the details.
Yeah.
It's just something that we've got to keep in the back of our minds.
Oh, yeah. Maintenance costs for, for sure.
Yeah.
One eighteen only in the center.
My understanding is that we'd only have to do it in the center, given what the village improvements that they had shown would be, the proposed ones.
Barry Cade made a chat comment.
Can potential future commercial users be included somehow? Yeah, so well, no, so we can't include future commercial users in the current user rates, but as more users join the system, it would then reduce the over, it would spread the burden over more users, basically.
So what about the, what about the streetscape? How was that going to be funded? That, the town's going to pay for that?
Yeah, so the streetscape project, the streetscape project, we would also be looking at USDA rural development, community facilities loan. It would be a separate loan than the wastewater one. So the project, the projects would track concurrently, but it would be a separate loan. The streetscapes project, we've also got opportunities for funding through V-Trans, federal highway dot build program. There's a couple other programs through ACCD. And then we are also resubmitting a Northern Borders Regional Commission grant next month to help support both projects as well.
Okay.
And there's another, there's another, a bunch of other funding opportunities for the wastewater project too that we need to investigate. Basically, if we can get as much money as possible from other sources in here, it's going to reduce our long-term indebtedness. We just need to be smart about how we do it because of how USDA works with the rural development loans. So without getting super complicated, USDA essentially gives you the, the offer that says we're going to give you twelve million bucks. And X percentage of that is going to be a loan and X percentage is going to be a grant. Now, the way they set that up, their offer is based on all the information that we give them from the preliminary engineering report, as well as the environmental studies we're doing, trying to get that seventy-five percent, right? And at the end of the day, once we accept their offer, the, those are locked. And we're forced to use the loan portion of their money before we get to the grant portion.
Yeah.
So what, what we want to do is essentially lock them in for the most money with the highest grant portion. And then we want to bring as much other funding to the table as we can to help offset the, the, the loan portion expenses. It gets kind of, that's not a show game, I guess. It's not a good way to put it, but like basically the timing of how you set up these different funding mechanisms is going to be really important just to make sure that we maximize the amount of grant that we have available to us.
Charlie?
Yeah.
As far as like grant opportunities, because we're in a floodplain and this like has an effect on water runoff, river distributaries, all of that, is this something that maybe like could be even funded through like the EPA or
Unfortunately, there's.
Water preservation or?
There's no EPA money. I mean, there's no direct EPA money that we found that we worked to support this. That would be different than like the USDA funding. The, the river, the floodplain stuff helps some in terms of justification for things, but there's no better direct funding source for that. You know, like the wild and scenic stuff helps us, helps make our case, but like it's not a really great funding mechanism.
Yeah, they don't have funding opportunities in that regard.
Not to the, not to the scale we want.
You see that message from Barry Cade? I don't know whether he's talking about the septic or.
Yeah, I think we addressed that, but if Barry's got follow-up to that, feel free to chime in Barry or write your comments there. Yep. So a couple of things, I just want to make sure that we hit. So, yeah, so basically, what's gonna, so actually just to back up for one second, right? So just to recap quickly, this first phase, the preliminary engineering report was funded in part by a, a grant from the USDA for thirty thousand dollars and by an. and by an engineering planning advance for $112,000 from the state through the agency of natural resources. Now, the USDA grant is a grant and the EPA loan is a loan, but it's only a loan that we pay back if we move forward with the project, right? So right now we're not on the hook for any money if we can this tomorrow. That gets us through the end of the preliminary engineering study, which gets submitted to USDA. And that's the one that they look at between now and August and come back to us with their offer. Now, one of the things that in talking with the engineering firm that we're looking at is that if we can get some of the preliminary, I'm, I'm sorry, some of the final engineering work done soon, that might better inform a more realistic and lower cost estimate. For example, a lot of the cost estimates for piping is based on formulas about the distance from the front to the back of the house in the backyard. Things that we're, we're assuming, but we don't quite know. And so once we get some of the final engineering work done, which is in more detail, we'll be able to have more solid cost estimates, which might lower our overall cost for the project, which better positions us for the USDA's funding offer. Now, the reason that's important is because the mechanism that we've selected and tried to fund the final engineering is a loan from the state clean water revolving fund. So we submitted a priority list application for that for $650,000. We don't hear about that until mid-June. And we'd like to get some of this preliminary engineering work started as soon as possible because the quicker we get that information in the hands of USDA, it can help our cost estimates bring the overall cost down, right? So because we don't have that clean water SRF money on hand until a later date to fund the final engineering, what we've done is we've reached back out to the Department of Environmental Conservation to see if we can boost our planning advance by another, you know, slug of money to get us 30% through our final engineering. I just want to point that out because the planning advance money is the money that we don't have to pay back if we don't move forward. So that's our best bet for getting money in the short term. That leaves us off the state water evolving fund. If we accept that loan and move forward with it, we gotta. So just making that clear that we're going to try to get more money out of A and R to support advancing this final design work soon. Any questions? Can I pause for a second? I realize this is like a ton of information. Thank you for hanging with us.
Yeah.
Well, I am working on a spreadsheet right now that will list all these funding sources as well as a timeline for the project. Hopefully I get that out to you guys like tomorrow. That might help visualize some of this better.
Okay.
But basically, yeah, kind of the next steps for us, right? So the final, the preliminary engineer, the preliminary engineering report is done. That's going to USDA in the interim between now and August. We want to get them as much information as we can to support the highest amount of grant funding available. We need to start having discussions with landowners around the disposal sites, which the committee is working on. And then the only other thing basically for us to really think about is this bond vote that we're going to have to do. So in terms of the bond vote, there's some moving parts here. One is like the world that we live in right now is not the world that we lived in two months ago. And just holding a bond vote or a special town meeting is something that is very much in question. I did talk to Will Sanning at the elections office at the Secretary of State. And they are slowly kind of trying to think about ways to adapt to this. But in the interim, he basically said, don't even think about doing it in the next month or two, which is fine. But we do have to realize that any kind of bond vote is going to happen within the context of COVID-19 and how we deal with that. An unknown thing, basically. But we will have to hold a bond vote prior to probably mid-July or late July because USDA needs to have the affirmative bond vote by their response at the end of August. So nothing that we have to move on or act on or plan or schedule tonight, but just keep in mind that sometime probably mid to late July, we're going to want to, if we can, hold a bond vote. The bond vote is essentially going to have to be written in a way where it says to the town, we give the town permission to borrow the full amount for this project. But the article will be written in a way that basically says, if we don't get the support funding for this, we're not going to move forward with it. We'll tweak the language, but we have to have that vote prior to USDA coming back with their funding offer. So just keep that kind of marker out there, you know, mid, mid to late July, probably just target a bond vote for this.
So would, would the bond vote include the land purchases too?
No. So the bond vote, so the land purchases would be made with money coming with the USDA loan. I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know if the land purchase would have to be addressed in the bond language itself. I can find that out, but, but yeah, so the, the, this is going to be basically, the bond vote is going to be to encompass the, the borrowing authority to, to get the money. Because we can't move forward without that.
Yeah.
I don't want to pivot away from the wastewater and streetscape projects, but I just do want to flag also that not only are we looking at a bond vote for this project, we also have to talk about adjusting the tax due dates.
Yeah.
Put a pin in that for a second and we'll get back to it. But are there any other questions, comments at this point, discussion around the wastewater and the streetscape project? Again, I realize like this is a lot to take in and digest. If you haven't been following along with it the entire way, the report's a long report. It's pretty dense. Work through it when you can. But our, our big kind of target out there now is going to be working towards that bond vote. And then as we move into these next phases, you know, basically getting town support around it. The one thing I'm really kind of nervous about and we need to be cognizant of is if we're going to go to a bond vote sometime in midsummer for like millions of dollars, we have to realize that given the context we're doing this in, we don't want to set it up in a way where anybody can come back and accuse us of trying to put through a multimillion dollar bond during a crisis, essentially.
Yeah.
That's going to be one of our biggest challenges is getting information out there, creating the forums for people to take the information in, discuss it, digest it, understand it. So just want to put that out there. That's a.
Virus is very good timing.
What's that?
The virus was very good timing.
Yeah. Not to sound like gray or dark, but right now, as far as this project goes, we couldn't ask for a better situation. I mean, rates are in the tank as far as, I mean, people are like paying you to borrow money right now. So we will never, we will never get a, a better time.
Better deal.
Project like this.
Yeah.
There's also potential for additional money through some of the stimulus packages that are coming through that might be able to come our way. That's not a sure thing right now, but there might be additional opportunities to get money through these packages. But the main takeaway is the interest rates right now are like as low as they're going to be, well, maybe not, but like as low as we've seen them in a long, long time. So it's a good time for us.
One thing I was just going to sort of recommend in terms of building, building a case for good support will be to revisit the process we went through in the community visits that spurred this in the first place. I was actually, while I was sort of breezing through, I was trying to remind myself like, oh wait, why was this the, the highest priority? And like I was, you know, an intimate part of the, the CV process. So just as we're, you know, that, that was, yeah, there'll be a lot of material there that we can operate off of and work off of. And, you know, I'm just thinking about the last major infrastructure project and how that, you know, was a, you know, led ultimately to the community visits process to get more town engagement and a community directed process here. So I just encourage us as we're developing the communications with our community to sort of dig back into that process.
On that note, Jacob, we still though do not know if the surveys that were sent out ever, ever supported it as well.
So wastewater surveys, Larry?
The surveys we sent out about the wastewater and the streetscape.
So I do, I do finally have a digital copy of the wastewater surveys if you want to see them. In retrospect, I think we didn't ask the right questions the right way. And I don't know if we could have asked the right questions the right way, I guess, because again, you know, I think some information we have to gather is going to be a face-to-face gathering of the information.
Yeah.
Anything else on the streetscapes project or wastewater project?
I will, yeah, I will have more, but I'm not fully prepared at this hour to formulate complete sentences. So I'll, I'll get there.
I'm going to send out some more information this week to the board. I'm trying to, trying to slowly get this information in a package that the board can use, but also set up so that we can disseminate it publicly. So I'll send that out soon and you can take a look at that. Just by comparison, just for, for kicks, you run up the water system, the last big infrastructure project we did. So I was just curious, like if we did that project today, what would be looking at to go to bond for? So in today's dollars, we went to bond for 1.2 million dollars.
Yeah.
You did the project. So.
And it was a, it was a four million, four million dollar project, I think.
Yeah. 900,000 is what they came to you, but if you calculate for inflation, we're at like 1.2 million, basically. So if you're going to compare dollars to dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the, on the wastewater or streetscape? If not, we'll try to move relatively quick through this last few things because it's already 8:40. But real, real quick, since we already touched on it, if we can jump to item F, the municipal tax due dates. So just to recap, because of the impact on the tax rate, we had talked about setting up another due date, a second due date for a portion of the municipal taxes. In order to do that, a town needs to pass an affirmative vote that they want to do that. We can have that vote the same time as we have the bond vote. Makes sense logistically to do it that way. I think.
It'll have to be done before the taxes go out.
Well, yeah. And so to that end, we have to send the tax bills out one month before the first payment is due. I think the, I can double check that, but I think legally we have to send them out one month before they're due. We want to send them out more sooner than that anyway. We're going to have a little bit of a trick here because when the, when the feds pushed the income tax due date back to July 15th, that screws us up a little bit because we don't get the homestead declaration stuff and the income information to calculate state payments until those are filed. So might be in a situation where our tax bills aren't going to show state credits. So for that reason and for everything else, I was talking to Erin today and she and I were talking about a potential system where we actually move the first due date to like August and the second due date farther out into next spring. She and I were going to crunch some more numbers around that and then bring a report back to the board next meeting. But just be aware that those votes need to peg to the bond vote basically. And if the bond vote happens in July, tax bills probably wouldn't go out until, you know, late July or the beginning of August anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I thought our first tax payment was due in November.
It is right now. Yeah. But what, what we were talking about was.
Moving it back to August?
That doesn't make sense then. My note might be wrong there. Anyway, we're, we're trying to figure out a schedule that makes more sense based on when we're going to get the information to the state to have on tax bills. So.
And that's because of income tax, you said?
Well, so when, when you file your taxes, that gives the state the information they need to figure out what your state payments are going to be. And so.
My accountant every year though tells me I already know what my state payment's going to be.
Yeah, we talked about this before. So I don't.
Paper right here.
Yeah. No, I, I remember Sue, I remember talking about this. I, let me, let me get a full report together with Erin and come back to you guys with that. Because the state payment information is one thing, the due date's the other one. And then the impact of the tax rate. So.
Normally our taxes were due in November, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or, or the full tax was due by November.
Yeah. Yup.
We had to pay the whole thing by November, right?
Yeah. All right. So anyway, just hold, hold that space and just keep that in the back of your head. Okay, real quick, item 8D, we already covered that. There's no new news on the Main Street location. And then the sale of the ambulance, there's a gentleman from Harwich, Massachusetts who's interested. Trying to coordinate a time to have him come up and look at the ambulance. No time set yet. We do have somebody else interested. So thanks Suzanne for following up with that. Moving on to new business, the only real item here are the road crew contracts and hire. So this is something that we would normally conduct under executive session. So with that, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Okay. We have a motion from Mark to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Jacob. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, bye everybody. Thank you.
So.
Good night.
We will call the vote. All those in favor of entering into executive session to discuss the hire and contracts of the road crew personnel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? extensions? Great. We're out of executive session. Okay. So first up is Michael's salary increase. I would move that we increase Michael's salary to $55,182 from $54,100.
I will second that.
We have a second from Mark. Is there any further discussion? Sorry. So the number, so we're, the motion is to increase. Yup. Yup. So the motion is to increase Michael's salary to 55,182 from 54,100. Okay. Hearing no further discussion.
Thank you.
We can vote. All those in favor, seeing as I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Motion carries. Second item is, is Mark's, Mark's hourly rate. I would move to adjust Mark's hourly rate from $19.40 up to $21 an hour.
I will second that.
We have a second from Mark. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, seeing as I'm saying aye.
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 Tommy Marks, last name again.
Yo, Matt.
Okay. So I, I got an aye off of Mark and Jacob. Was that a nice Suzanne?
Yep.
Great. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Motion carries unanimous. Last item, I would move to hire Blaine Cattell for the road crew position, starting at an hourly rate of 20 bucks an hour. Contract includes standard language, including two weeks vacation, one week paid sick time.
I'm sorry, Charlie, can you repeat that?
Yep, so just move to hire Blaine Cattell for the road worker position. Pay rate of $20 an hour. And two weeks, two weeks vacation, one week paid sick time.
And I will second that.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Great, motion carries.
So, so these are all effective April 1st?
Yeah, these are all effective April 1st.
Okay.
That is correct. All right, very last item of business. We have a overweight truck permit for GW Tatro Construction.
What were the weights on the trucks?
Weights are 60,000, 69,000 and 80,000, and those are for three, four and five axle trucks.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the overweight truck permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Jacob. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great, motion carries.
Do you have a class? GW Tatro.
Yep, that was GW Tatro Construction, Inc. was the name of the company, yep. Great. So with that, that's our agenda. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there. I know that like two and a half hours staring at a screen on a Zoom call can be mind-numbing. But remember, half of this was all appointments, and so we're going to have to do that again next time. So.
Bye Charlie.
So I mean, a motion to adjourn is needed and in order. Okay, a motion to adjourn from Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Jacob. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Great, any opposed? Any extensions? Great, motion carries. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you, Jared.